I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming tonight. We will start the meeting off once we have roll calls complete, Tiffany?
Yes, it is.
Okay. The board of education approved the agenda for the October 7th, 2024 regular Board of Education meeting.
So who?
Don?
Second.
Tom? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll start off tonight with one of the most important elements of the meeting, our spotlight. Joe and Tom?
Thank you. We are very excited this evening. We have the board to be honoring some Ball'sville Central District students for outstanding achievements and accomplishments, as well as staff members. We're gonna first start with our students. The following Ball'sville musicians were selected for the prestigious 2020 Award. New York State School, um, New York State School, um, Isma. New York State, New York State. Help me out there. New York State School Music Association, all of state, only in, um...
I had it after there. I drew a little thing.
Thank you, Casey. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. 2024 Isma, all state performing ensemble, which will be held December 5th through the 8th, 2024 in Rochester. So we're very excited to be recognizing these students and asking them to come up. Uh, first, we got Beethan Har, Symphony Portia, playing the trumpet. Next, we have Laney Manningstaff, travel chorus. Next, we have Colin Campbell, mixed chorus. Also for mixed chorus, we have Zach Woods. We have four students that are alternates. And first, we have a snare drummer, Vincent Biddy. Also a snare drummer, Ian Duffy. And the tuba, Ray Kiroz. And our soprano one, Avery Kennedy.
Aaron, if you'd like to take a picture, come on up. Come on up.
Show me everyone this. And I'm just gonna take one more back.
No, we have some exciting news. Uh, so we just learned over the last couple of days that Ray Kiroz is no longer an alternate. He is in. So we're gonna congratulate him. And now that he has a seat on behalf of the board of all district administrators, I say, you know, we enjoy watching you whether it's on the marching band field, in the auditorium, playing the instrument or singing. You all do the house together and you're so proud of how you represent the district. So thank you again. Congratulations. So we're gonna move to our staff. We actually had on the agenda this evening to recognize the Cassie Christians. Unfortunately, she's out sick today. So we decided to move that to our member meeting. But we also have other staff members here who are going to recognize us. And for these staff members, I want to talk a little bit about what it means to be on our team, our medical emergency response team. Given the complex nature of medical emergencies, both during and after school hours, the district has performed the medical emergency response team MURR in each of our buildings. The purpose of the MURR is to provide a coordinated response in the event of medical emergencies for students, staff, and visitors. Interests staff members volunteer to receive training that is conducted by Katie Gazoli, our district nurse practitioner, and school nurse supervisor. The training that MURR receives consists of a basis training on common medical emergencies such as high level blood sugar, asthma attacks, seizures, stroke, and anaphylaxis. MURR team members also receive skill-based training regarding how to administer Narcan, epinephrine, levon, while meeting New York State education department requirements. Members are also trained in stop-the-bleed protocols, CBR, and AAD use, and learning goals of a smooth and coordinated emergency response plan. During the first week of school, Alvin's MURR team pioneered by school nurse Veronica Penoyer successfully navigated through two medical emergencies that resulted in positive outcomes as well. MURR members quickly took action, knowing that many lifesaving interventions must take place at once. Thank you for following Alvin's staff members for being a part of MURR and putting the safety of our students and staff first. So I'd like to congratulate and thank these MURR members. School nurse Veronica Penoyer. Our special resource control officer right now, who reportedly has been hiding, will be here this evening. President LaFerrini. Kevina LeDilla. Kevina Lee Hunter. Kevina Holland. Kevina Zappino. And then Cole Swanson, also from the Cole's Academy. So congratulations again to our MURR team members at Alvin's Winter School for outstanding response, certainly in a timely way. We can't be more grateful. We have individuals like you doing it, like you, our students, and our staff members. So thank you. So we also have another special recognition this evening, not for a MURR team, but for another medical professional who has gone above and beyond. And could have highly more from Alvin's Winter School. So our Alvin's Winter School nurse, Kylie Moore, also came into action with her back-to-back medical emergencies during her first week of school. She was prepared and matured to meet the medical needs of all the students at Matt. That's something that she does with ease and on a regular basis. Thank you, Kylie, and Alvin's support team for keeping our students and staff in business for today.
Well, again, congratulations to students and to our staff. We appreciate you coming and we are very happy to honor you. We will start the business portion of our meeting, so if you have other things to do, you're welcome to leave at any time, okay?
If I could addition to the waiting just one minute. We do have one more special recognition and there's not a school board recognition. So if you don't mind, just sharing with us around two thirty minutes, we've got a school board. We have a few students that may, and we've got to get their security, and our students. So as many of you may know, the Board of Education will be recognized for their leadership and commitment to Ball'sville, such as school district and observance of the school board recognition, which is October fourteenth through the eighteenth. And sponsored by the New York State School Awards Association. It certainly takes strong schools to build a strong community, and our Board of Education members devote countless hours to making sure our schools are helping every child earn a higher level. They make very tough decisions every month and spend many hours studying education issues in regulations order to provide the kind of accountability our community's capable to respect. Our school board engages and works to raise student achievement by developing a shared vision, goals for leadership, insurance strategies, resources, policies, and programs aligned with district roles, assessing and providing accountability for student achievement, supporting a healthy school district culture in which to work and learn, and much more. School board members should give Ball'sville citizens a voice in education decision-making. What we're gonna do now is go on to preview a short video that was created from Alvin's students. So, again, thank you to all of you, our pre-grad students, and our elementary advisors. On behalf of our students, we do have the books ready. Last year, we highlighted our club, or our middle school, our High Court Club. And they actually created, made some little toolkits that we have for each of the workers with laser graphics and some, uh, maybe sort of, it was part of the video that we showcased last year by Ray Hughes. So, uh, first, our, call you, so, hey, Mr. Henry? Mrs. Kevina Dixon? Minister Bull? Minister Calley? Minister River Miller? Minister Sherry? Minister Jenkins? Miss Miller? And we got Mrs. Batow, she's not on screen, we'll make sure you got this.
Yes, yes, yes.
And Mrs. Resisasi, who is called a wayward worker and is related to, he supports people and so he's working in her army and we have to do that service and we'll make sure he gets his, his, as well. So, I mean, I have the district leadership team and the entire Ball'sville Central District employees and students, again, and any word of change for all of our students.
Well, you didn't have to wait for that, but thank you very much. It's a pleasure to work with this room and it's a pleasure to work with these kids as well. Thank you. The next quarter businesses are around the table. I'm gonna turn it over to Joe for concluding this off. Our first discussion was on school safety.
I'm actually gonna have Mike Lepinchak, Chief of Police for the Ball'sville Police Department, come up and be available as well for questions and our comments as we work through this safety update as a little bit of a debrief for the full Board of Education. Brittany, I'm gonna have you pull up. There is a slideshow that's already on there. I'm wondering if that is just to have that available as I talk through some of these points. So what I'd first like to do is take this opportunity to again thank the Ball'sville Police Department, the Anadota County Sheriff's Office, and the New York State Police for their response and assistance on Monday, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. I would also like to thank our parents and families for their patience and understanding both during and after the incident. I know it was a scary situation for many of you as parents and guardians, and I want you to know that we will continue to reflect, adjust, and improve our safety procedures and protocols following the review of our entire team's response. I believe it is also important to say that ninety-nine percent of the time, we train and prepare for lockdowns during the school day. This was the first lockdown that I can recall that we had to enact, and it happened after our structured school day ended at dismissal. We know one of the messages that we've been sharing with staff over the last week is that we all have a responsibility to ensure student and staff safety. And as I communicated in the Friday letter that went out to our whole district, we are all human. We make split-second decisions while under stress, and that is a huge responsibility. But it is a responsibility that every staff member carries with them. This week, I had the opportunity to meet with staff and send out several communications regarding our safety protocols and reminders of our district's policy and safety plan. No situation is ever perfect, but it is expected that we always look to improve, and we are doing this as a school district. We also know that stress and adrenaline impact decision-making during every emergency situation. Being aware of our surroundings, having situational awareness, and being prepared to help makes us better when we are faced with those decisions in an emergency situation. I share with staff and families in the communication that we are all in this together. Everyone needs to remain vigilant to ensure the safety and security of our district. Students, staff, and community members play a vital role in keeping everyone safe. Our school students were reminded on Tuesday morning about reporting suspicious activities on campus, alerting a staff member if someone enters the building without going through our security protocols, and that they are never to open doors for anyone, including other students. Since that time, dismissal procedures have been changed in our buildings. After-school programming in our main campus secondary schools will follow more structured procedures to move throughout the building. Our activity advisors and coaches are reviewing safety plan updates with students and athletes. That is currently ongoing and will continue to be ongoing, especially at the start of each new athletic season. I also want to take this opportunity to remind our families, and Brittany, I'm gonna have you scroll down a few slides because it will, you'll see this on the graphic here. Keep going. One more. Right there. If you can just move Christie's picture for a minute so those that are in the audience can see this. I also want to remind staff and families and students that those blue lights on our buildings flash during the lockdown. If you see those blue lights, that is an indication that we're dealing with an emergency situation, and you must avoid the school and that specific area. I know we've communicated that before, but given the events that occurred on September thirtieth, I think we need to again remind families, remind students, remind our school community what those lights mean. And that will help both law enforcement and district as we have to respond during emergency situations. During the debriefing with staff, I asked them to consider four actions to make the experience meaningful and productive. That was to ask questions, to be solution-focused, to be open-minded, and to be prepared to think on their feet. We also committed to the fact that we learned from our mistakes. I am extremely proud of the staff for the way they handled this incident, but that doesn't mean that we were flawless. There were missteps, and both through our debriefings with law enforcement and our district team, we reviewed the timeline, and we have continued to work toward putting action steps into place to improve communication with families, including making sure that every parent receives a phone call during a lockdown or lockout in the future. And we will continue to strive to improve our communication. The key takeaways that I shared with staff during our debriefing centered around improving communications, revisiting our emergency protocols, and securing the campus. And as I alluded to just a few moments ago, what that communication looks like. We've already put other systems in place, some pre-recorded messages that are relevant in an emergency situation so that when we're dealing with, you know, an emergency at the command center, I can easily say to a cabinet member or our public information specialist, put out this specific message we already have recorded. They can also add additional messages. I think it's important from some of the feedback that we've heard from families that they'd like the voice attached. Our first communication went out with voice recording. Our last communication went out with a voice recording. Some of the communication in between did not have that voice recording because we were doing updates on the fly. And we certainly can do a better job of making sure that that is in place if we have to enact our plan in the future. We also made a point to emphasize with staff the idea of debriefing, more so with all of the students. This was especially important for our coaches and our activity advisors who were working with students, you know, after-school hours. And we wanted to make sure that it's very clear that the expectation is that they're having those conversations and debriefing with something that we assumed was happening. Ninety-nine percent of the time, it was happening, but this just emphasizes the fact that it has to happen regularly so that students are prepared and our staff are prepared. Whether we're here on site or we go to another school for a contest, we always have to be thinking about what our safety process is going to be when we're in those venues. We've been revisiting our emergency protocols, as I mentioned, some of the things that we've updated with the after-school dismissal process at Baker High School. They've gone down from having access to twenty-three exits to only four exits at the end of the school day. Those other emergency exits are only for an evacuation under the direction of a staff or when they hear the fire alarm as directed. I know that's an inconvenience for some of our students who want the fast way out, but I can say that going back to the comment earlier that we're all in this together, we're seriously making sure that we're doing what we can for students and staff safety. We all have a responsibility to do our part. So those few changes are in place, and I'm sure Evie will want to talk a little bit about what that means from her experience because that went into effect on Wednesday of that, uh, last week when we did reading. I also communicated with staff the idea that, you know, moving forward, we have to expect change, we have to be prepared to adjust, we have to be willing to stay current, and we have to do our part. And I know that we are doing that. We're doing that based on what's spelled out within our safety plan, but we also know it takes a lot of not only practice, but thinking on our feet in order to make sure that we're providing protection and safety for everyone. So I think the benefit of having a superintendent's conference day on Thursday last week provided us the opportunity to get with every staff member at the secondary level and go through more detailed information about our response and how we can do better. I think the chief will probably say a few words too to the fact that overall, I think, you know, we were successful in doing what we needed to do in responding, but there's always areas for growth and improvement, and there's not ever a situation that's gonna be perfect. And that's why we have plans, and that's why we practice, and that's why we debrief so that we know that we're doing the right things moving forward. So with that being said, I don't know that there's more I have unless there's specific questions from the board, but I'd give the chief a lot of his.
Chief, if you want to make a few comments and then we'll, if you have questions, okay?
Thank you. From our perspective, one of the key things was the fact that we've established such a strong relationship with the leadership team here at the district. So when we established that command post and followed the National Ensign Command System protocols of, you know, determining what operationally things need to be done, and not only from a NCIS standpoint, but from law enforcement and safety protocol as well, there's a process we have to go through when something like this happens. There's a difference, as you all know, between a lockdown and a lockout, and then how we handle that. Staffing becomes an issue because we've got, of course, the lockdown occurring at the largest school that the district has, and you're trying to pull resources from as many law enforcement entities as we can. We were fortunate to have some folks from the sheriff's office and state police assist us as well. As the superintendent discussed, as we look back, as we debriefed on Tuesday, one of the things we realized was we probably could have done a better job of communicating with some of the parents and the community members as a whole. At the time, we're obviously making decisions somewhat in a vacuum, trying to ensure that what's our most pressing need. And right then and there, our pressing need was A, is there anyone in that school building that shouldn't belong there? B, is there anyone in danger? C, we've got two other schools on this main campus as well, and ensuring the safety and security of certainly the elementary students right next door, and then the students at Dirk Jr. High School. And the nice thing about a safety plan is that it has to be a living and breathing document so you can make changes on, you know, two days later or the next day of, well, we're gonna make some changes based upon what happened. And that's the great thing about responsiveness and a good working relationship that we've established, that we can have that open discourse and that open dialogue to talk about what really went well, what things we can improve upon, and then where we could go from there. From our perspective, we think things went well, as the superintendent said, we can always improve, but it was a strong resolution, and it allowed us an opportunity to kind of work our way through what this process is in hope. and hopefully we never have to use it again. But if we do, I think we've all learned some things from it.
Just thank you, and we do thank you for all the support we've received. Your department of great leadership.
Of course.
I also might say that the board has had quite a bit of discussion. Although we haven't had a meeting, a formal meeting, we'll have some more, but we have reviewed in detail, minute-by-minute breakdown. We've had a lot of discussions. We certainly know some changes like the exit procedures will strengthen the security, but it is not something we just talk about after an incident. It's something we talk about on an ongoing basis. Let's just open it up. Any thoughts or questions at this time?
Joe, so you had mentioned, and it's interesting that the timing of this. Obviously, we've practiced lockdowns and lockouts while we're in session. When we talked about a lockdown at Baker after dismissal, but during the time of sports and activities and coaches and other folks being on campus, I'm just curious, how did that go? Did they know where to go, where to lock down the kids? Because it seems as though that wouldn't be necessarily something we always practice.
So that is communication. It is reviewed with the coaches as part of our athletic directors' education meeting. And within our safety plan specifically, we are supposed to be having that conversation with our student-athletes. I believe that this incident brought to light that we have to do a better job with that. I certainly know moving forward, every single coach is going to be having conversations prior to the, you know, getting full swing in with the seasons. Definitely as they go off to other venues that they're not used to being at, away sites, I think, is important. When you think about our general public coming to our buildings, we do that in some ways. When you go into the auditorium before a musical performance, we highlight, you know, where the emergency exits are, what we do in the event of an emergency. So it's just bringing to light the fact that, you know, we need to make sure we're doing that all of the time for all of our sports. When we're at the stadium, in the event of an emergency, you know, you need to make sure you exit the entrances. And a lot of times, you know, we're relying on announcers that don't necessarily, they're volunteers. We have some protocols in place with a video scoreboard, but I think that gives us another area for growth, that we can add announcements. We can communicate that, especially in those larger venues. I will say that our school resource officers and our special patrol officers meet on a by, or every-other-week basis. And the focus of the most recent meeting this past week was on response for all of our athletic and extracurricular events. So we have a lot of things happening at the stadium. There's a lot of people there. That unstructured setting, and I don't want to speak for the police department, but I mean, that's, I think, a time when, you know, people are more concerned about response because not everyone is trained in how to respond like we do during the school day. So coaches will be reviewing if they already haven't done that with their student-athletes. They should be talking about on a regular basis the process, like where to go in the event that we have to leave the stadium, where are we headed? If we're outside in a practice and somebody suspicious comes near us, what are we going to do? All of those scenarios are expected to be reviewed with our student-athletes moving forward. Not to say that they haven't happened, but I think this just drives home the fact that we need to do this. We have to commit to doing it on a regular basis. Some other adjustments that impact the school day. We've historically run these lockdown drills during a period, right? Because of, that's just when most schools do that, based on the trauma-informed practices that we're expected to follow. That being said, part of the discussion recently was having these lockdowns during some of the unstructured times, like during passing time. Students are secure in the building, but how would they respond when the sound goes off and they're asked to lock down in between periods? Are they reacting like they've been trained to get to the nearest classroom and secure themselves in there for the staff members to then work through the process that they have to follow from that point? So a lot of those things, without getting into the specifics that would impact, you know, anybody watching, giving away all of our security measures, those are systems and structures in a better place that we will be making some minor adjustments moving forward.
Evie, go ahead.
I'm gonna use cross-country as an example because they're the most diverse through around campus once they start practice. Why would they have to come back in the building if they don't have to?
They should. And part of the emphasis that was communicated to our staff, and I'm glad you mentioned that, is that Renee goes back a slide or two. Wherever the blue lights were, maybe it's forward, sorry. Anytime that there's a lockdown called in a building, you don't want to go into a building where there is... Unless, you have, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, you're not going to go into a building where there's a lockdown in place. The only exception to that would be if there's a threat, right? Outside in your area, and the safest place is to get away from that threat would be in the building. So what coaches are reviewing with athletes, see those blue lights? They're activated, our general public. Don't go anywhere near that building unless there's a threat that's right there that you have to get away from.
Joe, I have a question. So do we know how many students and staff were actually in the building?
So we have a rough idea, but that was part of the process moving forward with communication, utilizing our parent square system to gather that. Because it was occurring after-school hours when we had teams, student-athletes from Ray, Durkey, and Baker in the building, we know which teams were there. The coaches know which student-athletes were present that day. But from a district perspective, I think where there can be a change moving forward to help us with communication is to make sure that when we're communicating a lockdown situation or a lockout for that matter, we focus in on the school during, that's the primary focus during the school day. But after-school hours, I think it's in our best interest, given the fact of what we've learned, that that message goes out to all of the schools instead of just that school. We don't want to draw too much attention to it, but because there's the impact, being able to isolate quickly who's in the building, it makes sense to send the communication out to both all of the secondary students if we know they're on campus. So we do have rough ideas. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head whether it was 300 students or, you know, 500 students. It's closer toward the fewer because the majority of them were gone for the day, but it still, it still occurred where it impacted quite a few people.
The reason I bring that up is, I mean, if we knew who those folks were, like you said, it was a scary situation. And so I don't know if there was any, if you took any steps to reach back out to those, that group of staff and students, just to see how they were doing.
So we did have our president's team counselors available for support. Both Carrie and Jenna reported up to the high school in the cafeteria when we were dismissing students, when the lockdown was lifted, and they were there for additional support. And then they followed up with our school counseling team the next day. Both of the building principals at Durkey, Baker, and also at Ray, they communicated messages in the morning that day to make sure that students knew that there were additional supports in place.
So if they needed support, or they were feeling that they needed someone to speak to, then they knew that that was an option?
Yep. We had a triage and less than a backup support for each of the buildings by nine o'clock that night.
Okay. Thank you. That answers it.
Hi, can I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Are you able to hear me okay? Thank you. First, I'm glad to hear that we're having an open, honest review of what happened here. I think this situation has given us an opportunity to reassess our protocols and our plans. Thank goodness, nothing happened. So we now have an opportunity to try to prevent something from happening in our school. Couple of questions. One, students who happen to be at a school that's not their home school for an activity or a sport, have we addressed educating them about what they should be doing after school? And two, you mentioned that you have, now have reduced to four exits that students can use to leave the building. I don't know if you can tell me whether they're staffed by adults because, you know, we don't want to give away all of our details, but I'm hoping they are. And secondly, have we looked at our procedures for how visitors can come into our buildings during after-school hours? Thank you.
So I'll start with the questions that you ended with. So yes, there are... Can you hear me? Okay. There are faculty members that are monitoring those four exits. They are also monitoring the other nineteen exits in the building through our surveillance video, and they're following up with students that violate that reasonable expectation that we put forth. Regarding visitors in the building, that is, there is a process for that, that is communicated. Every door has signage that directs all visitors to the main entrance, and that obviously did not occur that day. But I think those other systems we've put in place will make sure that, you know, that's very clear for those individuals. And then regarding the dialogue with our student-athletes, so that is an expectation that our advisors, our coaches communicate with their teams. And at no point in time should any student-athlete or someone staying after school be unsupervised without an adult. So it's the expectation that they're also having those conversations with the students so that they know what to do in the event of an emergency situation. So I think we have that covered. One of the other pieces that we highlighted with our staff, which is not telling the secrets, right? Is that when we do a lockdown drill during the school day, after the drill is over, taking that extra two to three minutes to just talk with students about, "Okay, what if we were outside when this occurred? What would we do? What if you were outside and you saw something?" So they're running through a variety of scenarios, and our school resource officers and our special patrol officers will continue to have conversations with staff to put those scenarios in front of them during all of our faculty meetings and other opportunities that are department meetings that are created throughout the school year. So I think, you know, we've done that. We will continue to do that, but there certainly is much more emphasis now given what we experienced.
Thanks so much, Joe. We're a, Baldwinsville is such a welcoming and friendly community that our first instinct is not to be suspicious. And I really appreciate all the measures you've put in place and that you're doing a careful look at all of this.
One other piece that we've also added, and we've added some additional overtime for our school resource officers, especially on the main campus. So we've had discussions recently. Typically, our school resource officers work an eight-hour day. Given the timing with our threat detection systems in the morning, there's not really that ability to have that overlap because both Durkey and Baker start at the same time, and then you throw Ray in the mix, and they're starting, you know, five, you know, minutes plus or minus. So we added from now until the end of the school year an additional hour worth of time to have coverage on the main campus that we're just, you know, paying overtime for, which we think is obviously necessary just to make sure that we have everything covered.
I have just a question for Chief. First of all, Chief, thank you for, personal thank you, for everything you and your teams did. I have two daughters at Baker, sixteen, almost eighteen, but they are still my little girls. Absolutely. And one of them just happens to be our colleague here on board. And our colleague was in the lockdown at Baker. Our younger one was away from school. Evangeline, Evie, was in the building. Now, I gotta be honest with you, every, Christie used the term instinct. Every instinct, every cell in my body wanted to come down here, find that guy, or find that girl, whoever it was, myself, on my own, and I would not have acted as professionally as you would. And I know that's a terrible, awful thing for a lot of reasons. One of the reasons, though, that it's bad, and I'm asking this question, kind of like I'm the half dads, but kind of all parents, that that, doing that, would be very disruptive of everything that you and your teams are trying to accomplish. I'm wondering if you can just take a minute or two and describe really how disruptive that would be if parents were to show up in the middle of something like this.
Sure. Obviously, a scene like that is a, I don't want to use the word chaotic, but it's something that, it's very fluid, and we're trying to sort out, A, how many people are there? B, what is the threat? Is there a threat? And then C, I could certainly, all four of my children are graduates of Baker High School here. So, you know, I have nothing but the fondest memories in regards for this school district. But, and certainly as a parent, understand that desire and want to come down here and quote-unquote, "take care of business." But if we start having all of, a whole host of individuals showing up to quote-unquote, "help," now we're trying to figure out who's a friend and who's a foe. And that presents a real challenge to our team that are tasked with what our operational assignments are for ensuring that those buildings are secured and cleared in a manner that we can be fairly certain that there's no one there and that that threat is gone. Not going to talk about specifics for this particular incident, but we certainly utilized all the resources available to us, both the district's video capabilities and the cameras, as well as human intelligence as well, from what we heard from staff and other individuals. So for people to show up on campus unsolicited to help us is really not going to be a help. It's really going to be a hindrance because we can't organize those folks. It's bad enough just the law enforcement folks that are gonna self-dispatch themselves to here and trying to organize who they are. Are they on duty, off duty, plainclothes, in uniform? How do I identify and track those and supervise those individuals, let alone private citizens? I don't know if that answers your question, but I hope it does.
It does. It's amazing, and your commitment is just indescribable. And thank you's not enough. That's what I've got.
Well, thank you. And from our perspective, from the police department's perspective, we have no greater relationship than, of importance than with this school district. You know, I was on campus starting at six-thirty Tuesday morning, and mentioned this to the superintendent, I was astounded. I mean, I know I've been here thirty-seven years, but the chief is sixteen, so I know how many people come onto this campus every day. But still, when I saw the cars one after the other pulling out the campus, I'm like, "We need to figure out how many cars are actually coming out of this campus every day." Because I was kind of astounded at that. But, and that's a true statement. We have no greater relationship from our point of view, from this police department's point of view, than with the school district because of everything that is involved here, and the number of people, the students, the staff, and the importance that the community places upon it.
And I think, Joe, to that end, just to piggyback on Don's comments, we have thought through, in the most unfortunate event, if we did need to set a place for parents to go, that we've thought through that.
We do have, and you're not going to see all that specific information in the public version of the safety plan, which there was a slide here that, it's on our website, so certain information is out there for everybody, but the more detailed information with lockouts and lockdowns is hidden. So we do have reorganization, sites identified, locations. We didn't need to utilize that for this specific incident. We made the decision at the command center that it wasn't necessary. Our goal was to try to get students, you know, with their families as quickly as possible once the lockdown was lifted. But we have plans in place for that, and... But we have plans in place for that and, you know, to the point of where we can, you know, do a little bit better. We need to, we've blocked off our entrances, as the chief mentioned. There's a lot of people coming onto campus from the law enforcement, emergency, medical perspective. And they're not gonna have the ability in a more severe emergency situation to man those areas. And so we need to be available to do that. And so we did have folks on our staff with our facilities team manning the two main entrances. We have some other entrances that we have to control moving forward if we have to enact a similar emergency response. But it takes, going back to what we said earlier, it takes all of us, we all have a responsibility for student-staff safety, both the police department, the school district, our families, and our students. So it's a team effort, and we can't be successful without everyone working together.
Well, again, thank you very much, and we've had, we will continue to have discussions. But I wanna say, from what I think we've all seen, the safety plan is an excellent one. You learned something from this, and one of the things is about limiting the exits. But we'll continue to debrief, it just takes everybody working together. Again, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Joe, and your team. You certainly did everything you could to remedy this situation. And we'll be ongoing discussion as it always is.
Look forward to further collaboration with the superintendent and his leadership team, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to the next item, which is our capital project that we're talking about.
So we wanted to throw out there, we had initially tentatively scheduled a special board meeting at seven o'clock in the morning on October twenty-fourth, after we get back from the New York State School Boards Association Convention. And given the timing of when we were able to get the seeker documents out, we have the ability to do that sooner. And so we're hoping that we can maybe make a decision today, or you can make a decision the week of the thirteenth, so just before we go next week. Is there a day, like maybe Thursday or Wednesday, Tiffany, in the morning that would work best to have a quick seven o'clock meeting? We need a quorum. It would approve, it would be to approve the seeker resolution, and then the resolution to move forward with the project. It will be helpful for us to not have to wait until the twenty-fourth because of the fact that Tiffany's got a lot of notice to the, public notice that has to go out for the newspapers, and there has to be so many publications, and it just buys us a little bit of time in case there's like a little hiccup.
So maybe it's best, how quickly can we do this? What's the first date that's available? Five, forty-five days, thirty days?
Yeah, so I believe it would be after the holidays, the Tuesday, the fifteenth.
So the fifteenth is a Tuesday.
Fifteenth, sixteenth through seventeenth, a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
So shall we move from, who could do it on the fifteenth? Can everybody do it on the fifteenth? Okay. Thank you, thank you. Fifteen.
Fifteen, seven AM. Okay, that's your guidance, thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you. I guess that concludes the roundtable of those we've already said, the safety discussion is an ongoing discussion, so that will continue. But we'll move on to correspondence board activities and committee reports. I think noting here, the one thing that was very interesting is on September sixteenth, there was a community debate. And we had some information from that, that was on parent involvement. And I, somebody attended that, was it Wayne? Do you wanna, did you see the survey? Do you wanna talk about what you thought of the meeting?
Sure, yep. And actually, so there was a survey with just the people that were at the event, and then there was a follow-up survey sent out to parents. And we got that information in our Friday letter. So we're still kind of looking at it, but it was basically just asking parents how they prefer their communication, what reasons they are involved with the school, like whether it's sports or student achievements and that kind of thing. Also, how often they're involved. So just looking to kind of come up with more ways to get more people involved, looking to localize more things at each school compared to having everything on the main campus type thing. So those are just a couple of things that we're looking at to help improve. But always getting feedback is helpful, like I was just looking through this earlier today as well, just to see what would help parents be more involved in different school-related activities.
So we'll continue to discuss those. And that was great, these community debates have offered some great opportunities to gather information within the community.
Yeah, and I think in our work session, I mentioned the conversation that I had with a student who was there. So it was great to connect with that, and also some other parents that were there that actually worked in other school districts. So we were able to kind of collaborate, compare ideas of what they do in their district versus what we do and that type of thing, so it's good.
Thank you, thank you. And also, there was a Wednesday, I know a couple people went to the Central New York School Board Association Expectations. Any thoughts on that? Sam?
We had great discussion. It was kind of like a mini-review of some topics that we had prior training on, and it was just agreed back and forth, nothing formal. To get the chance to attend at another time, you know, and people had questions about, you know, how to talk to people that maybe have questions when you're out in the public or anything like that.
So, yeah, I agree. And the recording is available on the website, I believe. They said they were gonna make it available, whether it's there or not right now, I don't know, 'cause I didn't say. But yeah, it was good dialogue. Colleen and Rick, Rick Tim, Tim, Timbs? Were the presenters and Derek Dorsey. And it was just good dialogue, like expectations. One of the things they had talked about was goal setting, which I think that we've done a great job with the past couple of years, kind of laying those out and working together, collaborating to come up with the goals. So they talked about goal setting. They also talked about having like a long-term plan, which is another thing. It's really cool when you go to these things and they talk about things that you should do, and in my head, I'm like, okay, yep, perfect, great, yep. So you do that mental check of things that we're doing, which is good. But they talked about having a long-term plan and having a good, honest, open relationship with the superintendent and the district office and stuff like that, 'cause that's how you build those relationships.
Thank you, thank you. Then just before this meeting, there was an audit committee meeting, and I think Sam, you wanted to report on that.
Yes, Christie and Andrew and Wayne and I attended along with the board. And we talked about our internal audit and our risk focus and our assessment plan. And we're planning to focus on the capital project and the planning and management this year. We also discussed our investment policy, our claims audit review, our audit committee charter, and our external audit of two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four. We had a clean audit. We have a correction plan for that, and we have a plan on how to spend out the money that we need to. And it was all an awesome meeting, a lot of discussion. Christie, Wayne, you have a different thoughts?
I've talked enough. Mr. Henty?
I don't know if Christie wanted to share anything, she had some great questions through that dialogue, so I don't know if you wanted to follow up on any of those, or?
No, I think Sam did a perfect summary.
I agree.
And certainly, I've read the report, obviously, and I'm very pleased, 'cause the focus last year was the finances. And Tiffany, congratulations. When you do an audit and all they come up with is a little too much money in one account, you know something's going good. So congratulations, that was great. Next, so that's anything, anything else in the past to talk about? Then the upcoming, on Thursday, October the tenth, is the New York State School Board's business meeting. And for the first time in my memory, one of our resolutions has been adopted, well, it's been supported by Central, or excuse me, New York State School Boards. And I know that our representative, our delegate, will just wanna comment on his train.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time today practicing on how to turn our cameras on and speak on the webcam. But it was, it was actually a really good meeting, I think. We've had two meetings leading up to this one. The one thing they did on October first was they allowed opportunity for people to ask questions about the resolutions in a pre-meeting so that we hopefully don't have the six-hour meeting that Don had last year, so.
It was eleven, but we're close to six.
Eleven, eleven, okay, yeah. Oh, man, all right, well. So, yeah, our resolution came up, no one really had any questions, so I think that's good. And, you know, obviously, we had talked about the possible amendment from Velo Manlius, although we think that's better standing on its own. I think it just indicates to us that other schools are dealing with the same thing that we are. I think, I think it's only gonna be a benefit to any of the districts. And I'm sure we are not the only ones dealing with this particular need. So I think we'll have, you know, I anticipate us being approved.
Okay, great. Anything else? I guess there's more upcoming, oh, Sam, sorry.
Just one quick comment. Tomorrow is the final day for the Halloween costume pickup. If any families are interested and need Halloween costumes, it's down in the Student Services Building in the back, where we vote on the budget.
So we vote, I guess that's the best description, we go to vote on the budget, this is where you go to get a holiday, thank you.
Tomorrow from four-thirty to six-thirty.
Four-thirty, six, thank you, guys. Okay. Anything else, or are we ready to move on?
I just wanted to, sorry to keep talking. Shout out to the marching band for hosting their home show, I think it was two weeks ago. Everything went pretty smoothly. I was out in the parking lot the entire time like usual, and everything went pretty good out there. But everything sounded great out there as well, from what was going inside the stadium. And from what I've heard, everything went pretty smoothly, so just wanted to shout out them for a great event. It's always cool when you hear parents come up to you or staff from the marching bands, and they come and tell you how everything goes so smoothly every time we're here, and everyone knows what's going on, so the communication is great. And it's good to get that feedback, so it was good.
Thank you for that. And without trying to step on Eevee's report, the marching band won the show at Liverpool over the weekend. And I think, Casey, didn't they win the show at Auburn also? Yeah, that's it, yes, so it looks like they're on a roll here. Thank you. Eevee, I hope you didn't take any of your reports, thank you.
All right. So just because we were just talking about the lockdown, I'm gonna start with that. I was at the SAC meeting, and I think the biggest thing was we all, there was a split second where no one really knew where to go. We only really go to a corner, find a table. And then that kind of, there was a split second of conclusion before the teacher director, or the administrative director, stood at the certain position we're at. So I think maybe that is something that could be thought of for the future. Because I know that, especially at SUC, it's kind of like, oh, you must have heard this a hundred times before, where to go, what corner to go to, what table to call under. But I haven't been in every single room, and I know most seniors haven't, so I think that's just something that could be communicated with better. Did that split second, you know, make a difference? Other than that, we were all, it went really smoothly from what I currently asked, even this fourth team. Everyone was really able to be there at times, stay near friends, stay quiet. And then the administration, whatever teachers, coaches, they were also really good about updating the students. So they're, you know, calming down a little, 'cause a lot of people were very upset. And, yeah, people holding hands, praying, texting their parents and everything. So I think that part was really, it was nice to see that people were supporting each other through assignment, not just doing it by themselves. But overall, given that this had happened, it did go very smoothly. On a happier note, we had a new student luncheon on the twenty-sixth. I participated in this, and there was counselors in the library, we had pizza, we had drinks. And it was just to welcome the new students of the district, those they came from. I know we had sophomores that were there, we had a kid from Florida, I mean, we had people from everywhere in there. And just to get to know them, we played bingo, and the bingo was directed for certain school events or certain school perks, you could say, at the activity fair, things like math lab, just some stuff that isn't only or purely academic that would be really good for their academics. So it was really nice to have to see them around. And I know a lot of the Baker kids participated in that, involved here for that, to help them as well. And now you can just see them in the hall and say hi, they ask you questions. But it's really good to meet people that way. And then throughout, about the past month now, and I think going further, we've been having the senior meetings, the one-on-one senior meetings with your counselor, discussing college or trades, internships, apprenticeships, whatever you would possibly go into, just your future in general. On the parent side of that, they had the curriculum night and financial aid night to discuss, you know, how you could handle whatever your student is going into in terms of finances. They taught us about the Common App and scholarships. And then we were informed that to go to CRC to fill out transcripts, so it was just a lot of really good information that we got early on so the kids could get ahead of this, and I know students got it over the summer. But it was just very well organized in terms of what you need to do and when you need to do it. And a lot of responsibility put on the seniors and the juniors, 'cause the juniors all heard about this, so they did start planning, which was different from last year, 'cause I definitely not hear about it last year. And then on the twenty-seventh, we had homecoming and the activity fair. For homecoming that week, we were selling T-shirts, and it was really good, we played, some people with T-shirts around, I was like, oh my goodness, I sold you that shirt. But, so it was just really good, another great way to just meet new people, because there's always a student in the school that you have no idea. The activity fair, mostly drawn sophomores, it was a lot more energetic. I know student council was really trying to work towards that this year, because instead of just having a B sort of a conference, it was like an actual fair. A lot of kids signed up for a lot of clubs. I was there pretty much the entire day, walking around tables, watching the sign of chicks fill up. And then just getting to know new people and see new clubs form. I know there were a couple of new clubs that weren't there last year, and I was really excited to see, oh my goodness, people wanted to join my club. So that's great, a lot of first meetings happened that week. And to kind of piggyback off that, Positivity Project had their first meeting, and I know that they are trying to become ESEA-approved. And there is an out-of-darkness walk, for anyone who's interested. It's for suicide prevention, it's this coming Saturday, the twelfth, nine to twelve. And it's just something we haven't been able to do before, because we have a headcount, and it's really cool that we're supporting this cause. Lastly, yes, lastly, Baker's dozen came out, and I know that week, the anticipation was insane. I mean, we had kids calculating to the decimal, we had comparisons, I mean, the group test, the text messages, comparing each student in the building, trying to guess the rank and the class size. I mean, it was just, it was, you can see, just by the calculations, who was gonna make the Baker's dozen, because who could do the calculations, first of all? And then whoever, and then you'd see like who was right, I mean, there were bets, it was insane, it was like a team, it was like a competition.
I, I, I never placing bets.
Not like money bets, but.
So Baker's dozen is the top thirteen, Baker's dozen, top thirteen ranking seniors. And it is wonderful to hear that there's anticipation over academic achievement, because sometimes we maybe don't give enough lip service to the importance of academics, but thank you for that, thank you.
And it wasn't, no, when we found out, it wasn't like a holiday shoot or anything, it was like, congratulations, you, that's outstanding, like, that's amazing. And then whatever your rank was, people tried to figure out the percent, and it was just, it was great to build and to see who was above and who was below. And it was all, it was all happy, it was never like, this person shouldn't have gotten that for whatever reason, you know? And that was just a really great thing to see, for to rebuild that, even like all three levels are welcome to that, but yes, thank you.
Well, thank you, and also along those lines, so I know that our society induction should be coming up.
Yes, they, because of the lockdown, that has been moved to next Thursday. Yes, they, because of the lockdown, that has been moved to next Thursday, the seventeenth, at seven o'clock PM at the high school auditorium theater.
Thank you again. Thank you. We certainly do welcome public participation and public comments. So now we've set aside time for requests to speak. Do we have any requests to speak?
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Then in the business section, our first is a consent agenda. So we saw the board of education approve the consent agenda pursuant to be attached. So, Don, second. Wayne? In terms of this, I see on here an ECA club account, which I think Eevee referred to P squared. And I did look at the request ad, and it appears to me that you are one of the initiators of Positivity Project. So congratulations. Okay. So I don't know that there's anything else.
Could I just ask a question?
Yes, thank you. Sorry. Yeah, please.
That's okay. It might be for future budget planning, but I had a question about the hockey contract. And I don't know if there are any other young women that want to play hockey, but just for the future, I just wonder if there's anything you need from the board in terms of support, or if there's anything we can do to either expand the number of young women who get to play in Oswego, or have a ice hockey team of our own?
I can comment quickly. So we, a team of our own. So that has been part of discussion over the last couple of years. Chris Campolino will be getting out communications soon to families to see what the interest would be, whether we have enough student athletes to participate, or if we would be able to potentially start a team and then have students from a neighboring district that also had enough interest participate and combine essentially, similar to what you see with a combining contract that's on the table for this evening. So that has been a part of the conversation. I mean, there is funding available in our current budget. The issue obviously ties to, you know, making sure that we had access to the equipment, the facilities, as we build out that program. So it's an emerging sport in New York State, similar to girls flag football and girls wrestling, and we've obviously moved forward in those directions. So that is something that we are getting interest for, potentially for twenty-five, twenty-six. Regarding having additional students, so based on some discussions just prior to this meeting, the student agreement that you have on here is for a student that I believe already participates in a program that's consistent with Oswego. And so we don't want to necessarily take an opportunity away. But I think there is a way to potentially, Matt and Chris Campolino does have a call-in to the athletic director at Oswego to see if we had, if we have other students that are interested, would they have the opportunity to potentially try out and see if they make the team? That being said, easiest way to provide opportunities for students is to have our own team. And then, you know, we can assess whether we allow additional folks from other schools to participate or not. I think that's the dilemma that Oswego's in right now, where they have committed to this one student athlete. But I think, you know, we have to, if the board's okay with it, you know, put it on me to put back out there to them that, you know, if you're approving this, that we also would like to consider other students at least trying out and seeing if they would be available to make the team and then contracting with Oswego for more than just the one student that's identified here.
Joe, I was just thinking, I would propose that in our, if we are going to approve the student that we have for us tonight, that we would, in that approval tonight, commit to approving any students, should they come forward, or should Oswego participate. I mean, we can't fix whatever their relationship's gonna be with Oswego, but we as a board can absolutely to approving students that we want.
Yeah, so we can communicate clearly if that's the direction the board would like, that that is the expectation in this approval, that we don't have to necessarily bring it back. We've identified the one student, but if there are other students that qualify, and they're able to work that out with Oswego Superintendent and Board of Education, that we then add their names to the list as well.
So could we amend this this evening, Joe?
Based on the discussion, if you all just want to agree on making that slight amendment with the first and second, maybe Jeremy puts it out there as the first and somebody seconds, and you vote on that, and then we'll vote again on the entire consent agenda as amended.
Yeah, you want to, well, put the, yeah, put the amendment on, on that particular item. So.
So we want to pull this one off our consent agenda?
I don't think you have to, we can just say you're gonna make a motion to amend that.
So I can make that motion?
Yeah.
So I can make the motion to amend that we're not only approving this student, but committing to the approval of future students that would put their name.
So let me, let me try to state what I understand, Jeremy, that for the Oswego Girls Hockey Agreement twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, you wish to amend that contract so that any Bollesville players, Bollesville women that want to play and are accepted on the team at Oswego be approved. Is that correct? You got that down?
And to try out.
Will be approved for us, by us to go.
To try out, yeah.
Yes.
To make that check with Oswego.
If, if, I said if Oswego accepts.
If Oswego chooses not to, that's on, we're.
We'll make a call tomorrow.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. You have a second. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, so we're moving on, we're voting first on the amendment.
How's that work gonna get out?
Oh, it'll get out.
You said that, Chris.
It'll be on the writing down.
Okay. Any, any other questions on the amendment? Okay, those in favor?
I.
Thank you. And Kristy, please, please pipe in, because everybody else, when their, when their microphone light comes on, I know they want to say something, but I can't, can't do that. So please just interrupt.
Thank you, babe.
Okay, those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, so it's amended, the Oswego Girls Hockey Agreement is amended. And now we'll go back to the consent agenda as a whole.
Don, Wayne.
Pardon?
Don, Wayne.
They already, they already made the motion, so you just had to vote?
Yeah, so, well, I'm looking for discussion or other questions, yeah. Okay, hearing done, proceed to vote. Those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, new business, item A, resolve the board of education approve the textbook adoption of the African American Odyssey by D. Hein, W. Hein, and S. Harrow, be used in grade twelve AP African American Studies classes pursuant to be attached. Sam? Tom? It seems logical to me that Tom, you would have wanted to approve the book, the professor. Okay, any discussion? Those in favor?
Those opposed?
Motion carries. Okay, now, item B, resolve the board of education approve the amended Bollesville Central School District Safety Plan pursuant to be attached. Don?
Second.
Andrew? To be very clear, the change in this plan is simply the change to add the new contract with the Onondoyou County Sheriff's Office. That's all we're changing. This will come up again next month, because when we're adding, we're adding in our security person to help with the threat detection monitoring. And so this will come up. But that's, that's the only change that's here. If there's any, any discussion or other questions on that. Okay, those in favor?
I think there was, just to put it out there, based on the discussion today, you know, as we think about additional support, you know, moving forward, you know, as we're building the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, it might be helpful to have a more in-depth conversation about an additional full-time SRO as opposed to the half-time one, or the part-time one, the retiree that we can't seem to fill with the Bollesville Police Department, so that we have coverage on the, on the main campus, whether, you know, that's after-school hours, so we're not necessarily paying overtime. Maybe there's a way to have some additional coverage. So I just want to put that out there. It does tie in some way to this, given the fact that we have that agency. No matter what we do, we'll have to come back out with another public hearing and approval of the safety plan, of which I want to point out, you'll be approving this tonight, but then you'll also be putting it on the agenda for the November meeting, because we have the Arrow Agreement that is just finishing with a thirty-day public counter period, and you'll have to approve this plan again for the fourth time. So we're following the process for the safety plan. And it's unusual that we have this many changes in one year, but given the regulation changes for the state and our new agreements, we're just doing the right thing.
Joe, I also like the idea of maybe staggering people, so maybe not having them all leave at the end of the school day and stay an extra hour.
Yeah.
I think the discussion would be maybe another quarter on the campus. Okay, any other questions, comments? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Item C, resolve the board of education approve the authorization of the application for corrective action rule for twenty twenty-four pursuant to be attached. Okay, Don and Captain Jeremy? Okay, so all we're doing here, if I'm correct, Tiffany, is some corrections, because viceander and play and vendor and all headline are changes, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And you can see the amounts of those. They weren't staggering amounts, any of them. But we are required by law to do this. Any further questions, discussion? Let's proceed to vote. Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Resolve, okay, item D, resolve the board of education accept the independent audit report involving Central School for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as presented by Mr. Thomas Suber, CPA from Mingle Meister Bar and Company, LOP, and the corrective action plan pursuant to be attached. Second. Don, Wayne? Okay, and of course, we discussed this, Sam and Kristy both, and Wayne, all, I think all discussed this a little bit earlier. Any other questions on that?
Just a quick one. We do mention corrective action plan here. Is there actually a corrective action plan? Is there anything that the board needs to be aware of that we should be applying for taking action on?
So we have a, a plan for the spend down of the fund balance in the Food Service Fund. That's already submitted with the state. And we're continuing with that plan. We actually have an agenda item on tonight's agenda that is part of that plan for our central receiving, moving to the main campus, where we are purchasing a freezer and a cooler. So we have central receiving here on the main campus.
So I have just a question. So this talks about the three-month average. What would be an average monthly expenditure? Do you have a rough idea, or?
I could give further information for you on that, and they did just recently change the, yeah, the regulations to allow six months. So, yeah, we could certainly provide further information regarding.
That's, that's not, it's not current. I'm just kind of curious how far over we work, but obviously, so they are, they are essentially doubling the amount you could have in there. Any other questions, discussion? Those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Resolve the board of education accept the donation of one. Beth, thank you. Obviously not a sewer, not a C P S. Beth Sewing Machine valued at two thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars to the Bollesville Central School District Family and Consumer Sciences Department. Andrew, thank you. Don, this is, was given by someone who moved into our district who was a former teacher, right?
Former family consumer science teacher, I believe, from another district. So we will, we will certainly thank this individual with, with a letter after the board accepts the donation. After, Beth.
Questions, discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Item F, resolve the board of education approve the award forklift bid number four oh three pursuant to be attached. Sam? Is it Tom? Thank you. Okay, we did take the little bidder, and it's a Syracuse firm, which is nice to be local. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion, motion carries. Item G, resolve the board of education approve the award of kitchen equipment contract bid pursuant to be attached. Wayne? Jeremy? And of course, this is part of what we were earlier talking about. This will be installed in the old bus garage area, which will be a receiving, we're receiving, correct. Anyone to add here?
Just to clarify, it's the facilities building, which is to the back, not the operations.
Thank you, thank you.
Which is also heated, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. And now, we close the board of education into executive session for the purpose of matters which will herald the public safety of disclosed and matters that you would just let a particular person. Tom, Jeremy? Usually not much discussion on this. Move to vote. Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. So we will adjourn for five minutes and go into executive session. Thank you, everyone.
And can I just ask, do I have the link to, is there a separate link?
Yes, if you go into the executive side of the board docs under executive session, I put a Google Meet link.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.